I'd like to call this public meeting in order. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and also for those who have passed away recently in our community, especially Neil McDonald, retired Scranton fireman and resident of West Scranton who passed away yesterday. We send our prayers and condolences to his family. We also would like to remember tonight the members of our armed services who died 80 years ago today when Pearl Harbor was attacked by Japan, a day as President Roosevelt said that will live in infamy.
Mr. Schuster.
The President.
Mr. McCandrew.
The President.
Dr. Rothschild here. Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here. Please, I'm sorry, Councilman Donahue.
I'd like to make a motion to table item 7B.
Second.
On the question. This piece of legislation is the payroll preparation tax, and it's being tabled this evening in order to allow for public comment before final consideration. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, report received from the Shade Tree Commission regarding 2021 expenditures and accomplishments. 3B, updated code enforcement report from the Office of Economic and Community Development dated November 30, 2021. 3C, minutes of the Scranton redevelopment authority regular meeting held November 3, 2021. 3D, single tax office city funds distributed 2021 dated December 2, 2021. 3E, minutes of the Civil Service Commission meeting held November 4, 2021. 3F, correspondence received from Mayor Page G. Cognetti dated November 29, 2021 regarding City of Scranton 2022 operating budget and amendments. 3G, correspondence received from the Pennsylvania Economy League dated December 6, 2021 regarding revised coordinator review of the city's proposed 2022 budget.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items?
I would just like to thank Mr. Santoli and the Shade Tree Commission for the work they've done over the past year.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not received and filed, do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have one. The South Scranton Menucha East Mountain Hometown Hero Banner Program is continuing this set, or they'll be accepting applications this Saturday, December 11, at the Naught Park Community Room. They'll be accepting the applications from 9:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m., and this will be the last day of the year to purchase a banner.
Thank you. Anyone else?
A quick one. So this Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., will be the sixth annual Shamrock Christmas Tree Toy Drive at Villamaria Restaurant in West Scranton. This toy drive benefits West Scranton Elementary students. So please bring a new unwrapped toy for a child in need between ages of zero and 12. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? An executive session was held on Thursday, December 2, in City Hall immediately following the budget hearings. During this executive session, council met with the mayor and members of the administration and reviewed pending litigation, the status of negotiations with municipal labor unions, and other personnel matters. I also want to announce, and I'll make a motion later on in the meeting to that effect, that next Tuesday, December 14, we will hopefully be our last meeting for this year. We will be having an additional public hearing on the 2022 budget. That will be at 5:45 p.m. I'll make a motion later on to have Mr. Voldenberg publish an advertisement in the newspaper to that effect. The reason for the second public hearing is because council felt it was very important to allow for additional public comment on the budget since there obviously are going to have to be probably in excess of 100 amendments because of the mistakes by the mayor and the administration. So that is next Tuesday, December 14, at 5:45 p.m. Also, we'll make a motion later on in the meeting that we will have a tentative special meeting scheduled for Wednesday, December 15, at 5:45 p.m. in the event that an unforeseen circumstance comes up with the 2022 budget. So in the event that we do not pass it next Tuesday, we have to pass it by the 15th per the Home Rule Charter, so we will reserve that date in case we need to have a special meeting. Anyone else? Mr. Voldenberg?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Thank you. Tonight, the first speaker is Les Spindler.
He's a councilor, he's a resident, homeowner, taxpayer. First off, that's terrible news about Neil McDonald. I didn't know he passed away. I've known Neil for over 30 years. He lived right next door to my in-laws for all the time I've known him. So my thoughts and prayers go out to the family of Neil McDonald. He was a great guy. Put a fence around my backyard for me. He did that when he was still a firefighter. Really nice guy, and it was very sad news. My thoughts and prayers go out to his family. Now, first thing, 5B, honor Chris Dougherty by naming the park after him. Whose idea was this?
This was my idea, and council concurred unanimously.
Well, I think you people have all lost your minds. Chris Dougherty almost bankrupted our city. He fought the unions, the firefighters, and the police officers. For years and years, lost every lawsuit, ended up losing a court decision to $80 million, which the unions cut that in half. They graciously took over only $40 million, which was really good on their part. And people talk about the unions, how they're money hungry and this and that. They did the city a big favor, saved the city $40 million. And, uh, other than, he took care of his campaign contributors, as I've said in the past. He let a construction company that campaigned, that contributed to his campaign plow our lots when we are DPW people to do that. He let a developer fix up a building downtown without having permits. And you people want to honor him with a park? You have to be crazy. It's ridiculous. When he left office, we were, the city was in a shambles. And no matter what you have to say about Bill Cartwright, he committed a crime, he's paying the price. But after Cartwright's first four years, the city was in much better shape than when he took office. Chris Dougherty, like I said, he almost bankrupted this city, and to name a park after him would be a crime. Why don't you name it Taxpayer Park? Because all our taxpayers got shafted under Chris Dougherty. We ended up paying taxes and taxes and taxes. And what do you think it's paying for that park? It's taxpayer money. No matter where the money came from, it's taxpayer money. So I hope you don't introduce that legislation, because it's a big mistake. Next thing, my favorite subject, the garbage tax. I come here year after year when it's budget time, and nobody ever does anything. I was told for years, oh, it's not a tax, it's a fee. Well, it's not a fee, because now it's on our property tax bill, so it's definitely a tax. And I wish council would do something about that to give the taxpayers a break. If not do away with it, just put it back to $178, the way it was years ago. I guess that's all I have right now, so we'll probably see you next week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Hart.
Many of you here know who I am or what I've done. For those of you who don't, my name is John Hart. I live in Scranton. And in 1984, I worked with former Mayor James McNulty in developing what became Steamtown Foundation in Scranton, and later on, came up with the idea to create a national park here in Scranton. Things were going swimmingly by the time the National Park Service took over in 1987. However, lately, I have found that the ability of the city to sort of coordinate tourism as a weekend industry in the city has sort of fallen apart. We have a park service director who does not like to talk to the trolley museum director. We have county commissioners writing our people in Washington to guide to get this woman who served as park director of the Lincoln Memorial all of a sudden thrown out of Scranton because they don't like the way she's doing business. Myself and my partner, Mike Masusi from Dummore, just recently established a new company in Scranton called the Pennsylvania Trolley Cars LLC, in which we plan to do historical architectural tours and tours of other attractions in the city beginning 2022, actually, hopefully this year with Christmas experiences for children up in Naught Park. I've been talking to Mayor Cognetti regarding the problem with tourism, and I have recommended to her that no more than in the '80s, when we had a Scranton Tourism Commission under the mayor, we were able to bring people together. We had restaurateurs coming together for monthly meetings. We had hoteliers coming together, all of which were working in unison, all in one direction, to try to bring Scranton a weekend tourism experience which would give us some extra cash, which would give young people much added employment. And I offered to the mayor that our company, Pennsylvania Trolley, would be more than willing, more than capable, and able to rejuvenate that, and we would do so without cost to the city. We would use our staff to establish the commission meetings and so forth, bring people together, and try to get everybody working in the same direction again. I'm here tonight to beseech all of you to look kindly on this proposal, should and if the mayor proposes it. We stand ready to help in any way we can. I look at communities such as Jim Thorpe, and nothing against Jim Thorpe, but when it comes to offering people a weekend of enjoyment, entertainment, and historical perspective, we're the city that basically brought about the Industrial Revolution to this world, and we have an awful lot to offer. All we have to do is put our good senses to work, everybody work in one direction, and bring it all together. I can't believe as an Irishman, I'm a minute and 31 seconds short.
You know what, Mr. Hart, I want to say, right up here, Mr. Hart, I want to say just that we, and I appreciate all that you've done for the city of Scranton over the years, and especially with the trains and the trolley museum and your contributions to the city. And knowing you personally, I know how dedicated you are to the city of Scranton. So we want to thank you. In any way that we can help with this and your project, we'd be more than happy to. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Darwin Shaw.
Darwin Shaw, Scranton resident. Honestly, I would just like to say terrific job. Under stressful situations, you guys have roles above and beyond your calling, even with the lack of material. You stand firm, and you do the best that you can for the citizens. And I commemorate that, especially for me being a young man looking up to you guys. I do. Mr. Kyle, I watched videos on you. You have came a long, long way. Mr. Donahue, you got around city politics around my age, or probably a little younger. I look up to that. You guys are the reason why I ran for mayor of Scranton, Pennsylvania. Now, I would like to see, I would like to see you, baby, I'm gonna speak to you, because I didn't win. I would like to see you stress your rules. There's a lot of things that we set in our chambers, your chambers, that should not be set. They shouldn't. They're derogatory, and they're degrading, especially towards women. They are. This man is wonderful. I didn't know you were the person who made these trains, so I used to ride in them trains. And thank you for helping this man out. And any way, shape, or form that we can help out Ms. Page Cognetti, especially with this tax, it's going to be very difficult switching, especially finding a positive person to collect the money. It's an easy way to collect more money from individuals that are not paying to fill in that gap, but there can be a setback. What if those individuals stop paying completely? And like food markets, I said, will be taxable by the PPE tax. I think there will be, that can be very, very stressful. But it has to happen. It does. The school board and city council, like you say, the city should be on one page. If it's not, it's not going to look good, especially that we're coming out of Act 47. We have to. You guys know we have to. We're on the right track, and I would just like to see you keep pushing, because I'm still going to stand for the citizens, including you guys. And honestly, hopefully, one day, finish the work that you guys start when you decide to step down. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night. Next speaker is Dave Dobson.
Dave Dobson, resident. And I also, up until a year or two ago in the COVID, almost every fall, we were on trolley trips and Christmas trips and excursions with the trains, and I absolutely love Steamtown. Hopefully someday. Okay, I mentioned about televisions not being recyclable. If working, excuse me, the Salvation Army sells a lot of old televisions to people with less fortunate situations and other things. When I walk to Doggy, I see a lot of useful items just thrown out in the trash. Coolers, all kinds of things. I saw a cooler filled with water a couple of years ago. Well, it obviously held water, was a good cooler. I mean, donate it to some organization. And, okay, as far as 6F is concerned, I would try to be a little easier with people if they're willing to clean up. Maybe there shouldn't be initial fines and such, because they get written up as a strict law, and then they never get enforced. You're almost afraid that you're going to make more trouble than what it's worth for a neighbor or something, and you just don't even use it. On 5B, I liked Mayor Dougherty. I voted for him twice, and the third time wasn't a charm. He has some good ideas and some not so good at times. As far as the unions, if you don't have a union, everybody should have one, as far as I'm concerned, because otherwise, you're at will. And that means that if I don't like your aftershave, and I'm the boss, I can tell you, there's the door, with no consideration as to what, I would have to pay you unemployment, but that's all. No matter what you have into the business and... So as far as the American public employment hasn't been the greatest for about 40 years. Thirty-six percenters, I call them, and I'm not against any tax exempt that truly do service to the community, like hospitals, colleges, and universities, and a whole array of things, but sometimes they are entirely questionable. It's like I mentioned, up in West Side, at the top of Linden Street, you could see a field filled with old cinder blocks and stuff, and I would bet that there's no taxes on that property. Hand it back to the city if you don't want it. On the budget, I think it's time we have a sit-down with the mayor, and every year, and start this a long time before. And I don't know how anybody forms a budget without the tally sheets from the previous year, the audit. I don't know how anybody could do that and be accurate. Once again, one of my pet peeves, there's now, we're up to about 400, and Pennsylvania included, on voting, 400 derogatory bills, making people jump through hoops to vote, actually giving legislatures the right to overturn the vote from the opposing party especially. So keep on your congressman, and don't let up. I have to start making calls. I did quite a bit. And on COVID, once again, I kind of goofed up. I forgot that little map that I seen in the newspaper, and it was people contracting COVID who were anti-vaxers and Trump voters, two to one. And last night, I heard in some areas, it's six to one, and 2% of those will probably die. So that's a lot of people. It's still over 100,000 a day. Thank you. Have a good day.
Would anyone else like to address council?
In listening to the topics that you brought up, I guess that was PDL who was here earlier, I understand the trepidation. Looking at numbers collected from previous, from the previous year for taxes, assuming that there's going to be a continued windfall of multiple years of back taxes being collected is smoke and mirrors. If I collect from you in this year all of your back bills, there's not going to be back bills for me to collect next year. So if we're looking at collecting two years' worth of back bills, current plus two years, and we've done that, that is 2/3 of the revenue that we are not going to get on the next year, because that backlog is not there. I think putting those numbers in is, it's a shell game. It looks at numbers that of back finances that have been collected that cannot be collected again because they are not due. I would have loved to have seen a breakdown of what was collected from the last year and what was collected in back dues separate, so you actually had real numbers of what was being collected for a year and what was the back year, so you could look at them and respectively go, a lot of this has been paid, maybe half of what was the back collected, we may recoup in the following years for those people who are still lagging behind. As for the trash, I received information on the trash, and I have always been concerned about the spending of the trash funds and the balancing. I asked almost two years ago for how much money did it cost for DPW to not only dispose of all the trash, but how much it cost for them in workers' hours for the collection, for the equipment, whatever they wanted to put on a yearly budget. I was told that information was not available. It seems that it never is available, even after two years, to split out exactly how much in a yearly revenue that the garbage actually costs to collect. A few weeks ago, I asked whether or not the garbage tax was separated as the law codifies and needs to be done into a separate account. And I've been informed, even after the legal challenges in 2017 made everyone aware that it was supposed to be separated, it is still not separated. It's taken in by the treasurer and put into the general fund who accounts for it. While accounting for it outside the law is not accounting for it. That is the same process that got the previous administration jailed for having things done under the table, under color of darkness, and saying, don't look here, we're trustworthy, everything is fine. Who, again, who gets to decide what part of the law the government has to follow and what doesn't? If it's said there's a process in the law, we shouldn't be going, well, we can trust them for handling it and putting it where they want to just because they're good with numbers. No, that's not it. It needs to be put into a separate fund as per the law, and for a number of years in not doing that has been negligent and knowingly defrauding the people of Scranton, because that law is there to protect those funds and to protect accountability. Last is the, I asked about data retention of records, specifically emails. I asked if there was a policy in place, and I was responded back with the information that there is none. They're thinking about doing a policy for data retention in 2022. Obviously, since they're thinking about it in 2022, they are ignoring the requirements of federal and all the laws that say there has to be a three-year retention rate. If there is no policy in place, and that's mandated by the government under FOIA regulations, why is the city not doing it? And why do they have to look now to decide what they should be following? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address council this evening? Mr. Voldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motion.
Councilman Schuster, any motions or comments this evening?
No, nothing at this time.
Councilman McCandrew, any motions or comments?
I have one. Mr. Voldenberg, could you do me a favor? It's been reported to me that there's an abandoned vehicle in the 900 block of Quincy Avenue. It's actually parked in front of 912 Quincy Avenue, and it's been there for at least 10 months to a year. And according to the person that brought this to my attention, the car has been out of inspection since July. I guess the police department was there over the summer, and the residents that lived there said, oh, okay, we'll take care of it. But now the residents have moved, so this car is truly abandoned. So if you could please follow up with that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. That is all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Rothschild, any motions or comments this evening?
No, none at this time. Thank you.
Councilman Donahue, any motions or comments?
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have two things. First, I want to say that I was very pleased to hear about the announcement that the city received $2 million in state grant funding for the Naught Pool Complex. I would like to say, though, I was concerned about what I read in the paper regarding the mayor's proposal. We haven't received anything official on exactly what the mayor would like to do with the pool complex at Naught Park. We know that there's going to be some kind of investment made, but we haven't been apprised of exactly what that's going to look like. Back in the summer, council received a proposal from a firm laying out quite a few options on what the pool complex could look like. And I think we were almost unanimous in the fact that we wanted to see the city go big with this project, because we only have one chance to make an impact up at this park. And I'm concerned that the mayor is not, I don't think we're going far enough with her plan. I haven't seen the plan. I read about the plan in the newspaper. But Naught Park, as I've said here before, is the jewel of the city of Scranton. It is one of the biggest attractions that we have. I go through that park all the time. I was just there the other night with my children with the lights at Naught. It is literally one of the biggest and best assets that the city of Scranton has. So just like when Mayor Walsh made an investment years ago in the pool complex, we need to make that same investment, but we cannot cut corners. If we have to look towards a capital borrowing, if we have to look towards other ways of getting this fund- getting this funding, we should do that. But I'm afraid that we don't have a concrete plan in place. And if we don't get one soon, it's going to be two, three years before this project is completed. So again, I would just like to call on the mayor to make her plan for the Naog Pool Complex public with council, so that we know what's going to happen up there. And I would urge her to go, to go big there, and that we need to make the impact, because it's that important. I just want to, the budget's going to remain table tonight. We'll bring it back next week for a final vote on Tuesday. I was not really impressed with the caucus tonight, I have to be honest with you, with Jerry Crofts from the Pennsylvania Economy League. I asked some very pointed questions. The first one being, was the draft budget submitted to Pell on time? And he said it was. It was not submitted on time. According to Act 47, it has to be submitted 75 days prior to the end of the fiscal year. That would be October 18th. They submitted it October 24th. That's a week late. There's a pattern here. And judging by the caucus tonight, there was an awful lot of people who were asleep at the wheel here, in terms of the budget, which is very, very concerning. Now, I don't have to rehash all the mistakes that were made with the budget, because I think I've done that over the last two weeks, and I've said my piece. But I was even more concerned tonight with Mr. Cross from Pell. We went from, got a budget, $2.5 million in getting delinquent tax revenue, and he said, "Yep, stamp of approval. Sounds good to me. We get another budget, $4.5 million. Yeah, that's good, too." It's like we're dealing with monopoly money here. It's unbelievable. I still have concerns about that revenue figure, because of all the things I said earlier. And I think we really should get together with or talk to the County Tax Claim Bureau and find out how much is left to collect on the table. I think Mr. Coy said it correctly, and I think I made this point during the caucus. They didn't have those figures tonight about how much is left to collect. I mean, I had the figures from the Tax Claim Bureau, which I stated earlier. We've collected so far, from 2018 and prior, 2019 and 2020, just in this year alone, we've collected $4.7 million. Prior to the County Tax Claim Office, collecting delinquent taxes for the city, 2018, $1.7 million, 2019, $1.7 million. It's just hard for me to believe that we're going to continue to do that next year, especially in light of the fact that the whole agreement with the county is still up in the air. The mayor was here tonight and said they're still negotiating. Well, it's December. It's going to be January. It's going to be February. We've been negotiating since the summer. So I really have concerns about that $4.5 million figure. Mr. Volenberg, if you can get in touch with the county and the Tax Claim Bureau, I'd like to know what's outstanding. What's, are we still able to collect from those years? And then we'll see what they say. At this time, I would like to make a motion to have Mr. Volenberg, our city clerk, post an advertisement that city council hold a public 2022 budget hearing on Tuesday, December 14th at 5:45 PM.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second on the question. As I stated at the top of the meeting, I think it's, and I know my colleagues agree with me, that it's very important that we have this second budget hearing because of all of the changes. Now, hopefully, we will have those changes that council is going to make in amendment form, in the same form that we had to use last year when we had to make 55-plus amendments. We'll hopefully have that published Friday. If not Friday, on Monday, so that the public can view the changes that we have to make and that we are going to make before the final document is passed by council. And we will do that.
Just on the question, too, I'd like to also have, I think we have it set up this way, where we have the spreadsheets in its entirety, not just in the, not just, you know, the amendments we're going to make, but what it looks like in terms of its entirety will also be posted on Friday as well.
Anybody else?
Also on the question, I did discuss it in caucus about my concerns with the, with our revenue compared to expenditures. Pell has warned in the past about that creeping structural deficit that we have. It seems like we're adding more again, or we're proposing to add more to the budget again. I'm seeing some fluctuating numbers, real estate being one that you've already identified. And what this budget has included in it is hard increases to expenditures that are going to continue into the future, and fluctuating numbers or inaccurate numbers that may not pan out at the end of this year, and especially aren't going to pan out when it comes to, again, what's being left on the table in terms of delinquents. So we're going to come to a spot where, I mean, eventually taxes will have to be raised, but we're going to come to a point in time where these things aren't, I mean, I don't see them as being sustainable at this point in time, but they're my concerns at this point in time. Thank you.
And to add on to that, too, by the way, I failed to mention this. It was clear, after talking to Mr. Cross tonight, although he wouldn't come right out and say it, this process was rushed. They gave him a budget, a draft budget, on October 24th. He had to have a letter to us by November 15th. The numbers changed so many times. So I can only guess that maybe that's why they missed it, all the mistakes, because there was just, the numbers were changing. They were getting different numbers up until November 11th. So it's just very, very concerning, and hopefully, it doesn't happen next year. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. I'd also like to make a motion at this time, that council instruct our city clerk, Frank Volenberg, to publish an advertisement in the newspaper, that we have a special meeting on Wednesday, December 15th at 5:45 PM.
Second.
It's been a second. On the question? On the question, the reason for this motion is just in case something were to come up, new numbers were thrown at us, which at this point, I honestly wouldn't be surprised. And we have to pass the budget on December 15th. So we're really just giving ourselves some wiggle room in case that happens. So if that doesn't happen, and we pass the budget on Tuesday, December 14th, then we just, we won't have that meeting. The meeting will be canceled. And we'll post an agenda, and the agenda will be the 2022 budget. That will be the only thing that we will be discussing if we need to. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. That's all I have for tonight.
5B, for introduction, an ordinance authorizing the naming of a new pocket park located at 248 Wyoming Avenue in honor of former mayor Christopher A. Doherty.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
On the question? On the question, it's an honor for me to speak on this legislation tonight. As everyone knows, public service is often a thankless and a difficult job. There have been 36 mayors who have served our city, starting with Mayor Elliott Hill back in 1866. Every mayor who has served our great city has in some way had an impact on Scranton's history. Mayor Doherty had an enormous influence on Scranton, which can still be seen to this day. When Mayor Doherty took office in 2002, I was in ninth grade. The downtown was suffering, as was our park system, especially Naog, where it wasn't surprising to see needles littering the area and criminal activity. Mayor Doherty brought a clear vision of restoring our park system and making our downtown a place where people wanted to live and open businesses. And I just think of all the people throughout the years who utilized Naog, once it was restored under the Doherty administration, all of the other parks that were restored under the Doherty administration. I know I've talked about this numerous times over the last few years, but our park system is so important. I lived across the street from a park. My children used that park. That park was rehabbed. It changed the entire neighborhood. People who want to move into a city, want to move into a city with a good park system. The lights at Naog Park, which were started under Mayor Doherty, the treehouse, so many things were spurred by Mayor Doherty. Instead of becoming a dumping ground, Naog Park became an attraction known not only throughout northeastern Pennsylvania, but throughout the United States. Under Mayor Doherty's leadership, significant investments were made to our park, almost every park in each of our neighborhoods, which actually had a ripple effect throughout the city. So you would rehab a park, and other things would start to come alive again in the neighborhoods. Mayor Doherty's vision also transformed our downtown. New programs were implemented to attract businesses and residents to relocate to downtown Scranton, which if you think about it, back in 2002, no one in their right mind would have ever believed that we would have residents living in our downtown. You can't get an apartment in downtown Scranton. There's a waiting list. So there's been a huge resurgence in our downtown. So someone asked a question, why would we do this? Why would council unanimously support this? Naming this new downtown park in honor of Mayor Doherty is fitting, because it ties together two areas in which he made arguably the biggest impact of any mayor in the city's history, our downtown and our park system. The fruits of his labor and leadership have had a tremendously positive effect on the city of Scranton, and because of that, it is fitting tonight that we honor him in this way. And I want to thank my colleagues for their unanimous support. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved. And just to add on to this, we will need to suspend the rules next week to put this in seventh order for final passage, Frank, so if we can set the guide up for that.
5C, for introduction, a resolution authorizing the filing of a proposal for Keystone Elm Street program designation with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the Pine Brook Neighborhood Revitalization.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, we, I just talked about our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods in the city of Scranton are so important. It's funny to me, you know, when you talk about living in Scranton, and somebody asks you where you're from, Manuka, Southside, Pine Brook, Westside, you know, we are centered in our neighborhoods. Pine Brook is a neighborhood in our city which needs revitalization. There's so much history there. A lot of the history of our city starts in the Pine Brook section. So I am thrilled that council, along with Mayor Cagnetti, is taking the initiative here to create this vision and this framework for the resurgence of that neighborhood. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D, for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Terry Millard, 1618 Olive Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Scranton Municipal Recreation Authority effective November 23rd, 2021. Ms. Millard will fill the unexpired term of Robert Schumacher, who resigned on August 31st, 2021. The term of Ms. Millard will expire on December 31st, 2022.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I just want to thank Mr. Schumacher for his service to this board. I know we put in a lot of volunteer work up there. It is a very volunteer-centric board, and they really do a great job. And I also want to wish Mrs. Millard the best of luck as, in her new role on the board. Thank you.
On the question, I also want to echo those sentiments, thanking Mr. Schumacher for his service to Recreation Authority Board. I know he's done a lot of work over the years with them, and it's been a great help. But I also wanted to thank Mrs. Millard for being interested in the position and to now be serving on it. Thank you.
Anyone else? I would concur. Mr. Schumacher has done a wonderful job on the Recreation Authority Board. That board has single-handedly kind of taken control, along with the Recreation Department of Naog Park, and has done an absolutely phenomenal job. And you don't have to look any further than the light show this year. The light show this year, I know I've said this before, it's the best that I've seen it in a very, very long time, to their credit. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E, for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Michael Muller, 830 Taylor Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Historical Architecture Review Board. Term of Michael Muller on the Historical Architectural Review Board expired on October 11th, 2021, and was held over until November 18th, 2021. His new five-year term will expire on October 11th, 2026.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F, for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Harry V. McKay Jr., 529 Bogart Place, Apartment 205, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18503, to serve as a member of the City of Scranton Ethics Board. Mr. McKay will be replacing Andrew Heller, who resigned on August 31st, 2021. The three-year term of Mr. McKay will expire on November 24th, 2024.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, Mr. Boldenburg, we just received a, another letter of interest from a gentleman for the other open seat, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that'll be something that council will probably take up in the begin, right in the beginning of next year to fill that expired seat. I believe the gentleman's name was Andrew Lozella. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G, for introduction, a resolution, accepting a donation from Brayers Towing, located at 1013 Ferdinand Streets, Scranton, Pennsylvania, for the use of two portable light stands used to illuminate the Kaiser Valley Community Center parking lot and Weston Field for polling purposes on November 2nd, 2021, Election Day.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5H, for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate officials of the city of Scranton to enter into an agreement with the Department of Homeland Security, FEMA, in the amount of $42,85714, to be utilized by the Scranton Fire Department for the installation of smoke and carbon monoxide detectors.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, I want to commend the Mayor Cagnetti and her administration and our Scranton Fire Department. We far too often see the stories, tragic stories, from our city and across Pennsylvania and across the country of fires and people dying from carbon monoxide that may have been prevented if they had just had a detector in their home. This grant that the city applied for and is going to be awarded is to purchase and install approximately 2,000 smoke detectors and 1,000 carbon monoxide detectors in 1,000 residences in low to moderate income areas in our city. So this is a great program, and people should really take advantage of it. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file to council number 100, 2021, an ordinance, amending file to council number 36, 2020, amending file to council number 59, 2019, entitled, an ordinance amending file to council number 17, 1994, entitled, an ordinance as amended, authorizing the governing body of the city of Scranton to enact a waste disposal and collection fee for the purpose of raising revenue to cover the waste disposal and collection costs incurred by the city of Scranton for the disposal of refuse by maintaining the waste disposal and collection fee of $300 for calendar year 2022, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6B, reading by title, file to council number 101, 2021, an ordinance, amending file to council number 62, 2019, amending file to council number 58, 2016, as amended, entitled, establishing a registration program for residential rental properties, requiring all owners of residential rental properties to designate a property manager for service and process, and prescribing duties of owners, property managers, and occupants by maintaining the rental registration fee of $45 for calendar year 2022, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter.
You've heard reading by title of Item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that Item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
6C, reading by title, file the council number 102, 2021, an ordinance, amending file of the council number 35, 2020, an ordinance as amended, entitled, General City Operating Budget 2021, by transferring $30,000 from account number, as noted, non-departmental expenditures contingency, to account number, as noted, City Council Professional Services in the amount of $27,247.80, and the account number, as noted, City Council Advertising in the amount of $2,752.20.
You've heard reading by title of item 6C. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6C pass reading by title.
Second?
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
6D, reading by title, file the council number 103, 2021, an ordinance, adopting the investment policy for the city of Scranton attached heretofore and marked Exhibit A.
You've heard reading by title of item 6D. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6D pass reading by title.
Second?
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
6E, reading by title, file the council number 104, 2021, an ordinance, adopting the fund balance policy for the city of Scranton attached heretofore and marked as Exhibit A.
You've heard reading by title of item 6E. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6E pass reading by title.
Second?
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
6F, reading by title, file the council number 105, 2021, an ordinance, amending file of the council number 72, 2019, an ordinance, amending file of council number 64 of 2014, entitled, an ordinance adopting the quality of life and violation ticket process in the city of Scranton, as amended, to amend violations in Section 2, enforcement in Section 4, fines and penalties in Section 5, fines and penalties in Section 6, and citation fines in Section 7.
You've heard reading by title of item 6F. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6F pass reading by title.
Second?
On the question?
On the question, Mr. Voldenberg, can you just reach out to the administration and get a, get the information of what the original fines and fees were when this was passed and how they changed over the years?
I will, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the council number 94, 2021, creating and establishing special city account number 02.229642, entitled, ARP Funds, for the receipt and the disbursement of monies from the American Rescue Plan Funds.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second?
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yeah.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B was previously tabled. 7C for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the council number 96, 2021, amending file of the council number 95, 2015, an ordinance, entitled, amending file of the council number 79 of 2015, an ordinance amending file of the council number 145, 2007, entitled, an ordinance renaming the emergency and municipal services tax to local service tax, and by imposing a withholding of $52 for the calendar year 2015, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter by increasing the local services tax withholding from $52 to $156 for the calendar year 2015, and providing for the exemption from taxation for any person whose total earned income and net profits from all sources within the municipality is less than $15,600 for the calendar year 2015, under and pursuant to the Local Tax Enabling Act, Act 511 of 1965, PL 1257, 53 PS, Section 6924.101 at SEC, and the Municipalities Recovery Act, Act 47 of 1987, PL 246, 53 PS, Section 11701.101 at SEC, and their respective amendments, effective retroactive to January 1st, 2022. This tax enables the city of Scranton to continue to levy the local services tax at the fiscal year 2020 rate for the fiscal year 2021, for a total maximum local services rate at $156 for the fiscal year 2022, effective January 1st, 2022.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second? On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the council number 97, 2021, amending file of the council number 11, 1976, entitled, an ordinance as amended, enacting, imposing a tax for general revenue purposes in the amount of 2% on earned income and net profits on persons, individuals, associations, and businesses who are residents of the city of Scranton or non-residents of the city of Scranton for work done, services performed, or business conducted within the city of Scranton, requiring the filing of returns by taxpayers subject to the tax, requiring employers to collect the tax at source, providing for the administration, collection, and enforcement of the said tax, and imposing penalties for the violations by reenacting the imposition of the waste tax at 2 and 4/10% on earned income for residents and 1% on earned income for non-residents of the city of Scranton for work done, services performed, or business conducted within the city of Scranton for the year 2022, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second?
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
7E for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the council number 98, 2021, amending file of the council number 6, 1976, entitled, an ordinance as amended, imposing a tax for general revenue purposes on the transfer of real property situate within the city of Scranton, prescribing and regulating the method of evidencing the payment of such tax, conferring powers and imposing duties upon certain persons, and providing penalties by imposing the rate of the realty transfer tax at 2 and 2/10% for calendar year 2022, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually thereafter.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7E.
Second?
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7E legally and lawfully adopted.
7F for consideration by the Committee on Finance for adoption, file the council number 99, 2021, amending file of the council number 100, 1976, entitled, an ordinance as amended, levying general and special taxes for the fiscal year 1977, by setting the millage for the year 2022, and the same shall remain in full force and effect annually
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7F.
Second?
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7F legally and lawfully adopted.
7G for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 235, 2021, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Pioneer Construction Company, Inc., to perform demolition work within the city at Naog Pool and Pump House.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7G.
Second?
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7G legally and lawfully adopted.
7H for consider, consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, Resolution Number 236, 2021, appointment of Paul Andrew Simpson III, 2715 Price Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, to serve as a member of the Scranton Parking Authority Board, effective November 12th, 2021, until expiration of the term on June 1st, 2026, replacing James Wintermantle, whose term expired June 1st, 2021, and was held over.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7H.
Second?
On the question?
On the question, I would just like to thank Mr. Wintermantle for his service to the city and also to welcome Mr. Simpson.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7H legally and lawfully adopted.
7I for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for adoption, Resolution Number 237, 2021, ratifying and approving the city of Scranton application for grant funds from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for a multimodal transportation fund grant in the amount of $2,502,937.50 for the Wyoming Avenue Streetscapes project, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disperse the grant funds as appropriate.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As chairperson for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7I.
Second?
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7I legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, 8A, file the council number 88, 2021, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the city of Scranton and Bedrock Technology, AKA Keystone Technology Consulting, LLC, to provide information technology management services.
This piece of legislation is currently tabled. We will take the final vote on this next week. Solicitor Hayes has been working with Bedrock and the administration on amendments. Those amendments will be made next week, and then each council member will take an